Seven o'clock on June 6th, sorry. All council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Barrington and Councilmember Pogue. We have a special guest tonight, Mr. Graham Brockler. If you wouldn't mind coming down and leading us in the pledge of allegiance from Troop 373. The floor is yours?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for God.
Thank you, sir. All right, so tonight we have big groups here who've done fantastic things in our town. So if, first off, if I could have the 2022 Spring Police Department Citizens Academy group up here. Deputy Chief and Deputy Chief Van Peteren can come down as well? Come on down. All right, so just gonna give you all a little bit of tidbit about what this group has done. The Parkers Department like to celebrate members of the community that completed the Spring Citizens Police Academy by recognizing them with this special presentation. The Police Department's free 13-week Citizens Police Academy program gives participants firsthand information about how the Police Department operates, classes focused on criminal law, mounted patrol, evidence dispatch, accident reconstruction, DUI laws, K-9, and many other topics. In addition to the interactive classes, participants are able to attend the optional trip to the law enforcement firearms training facility. Everyone to the range?
Well done.
You know, I was in the range or what, not a problem. Let's see, please join me in congratulating the newest graduates of the Parker City.
Congratulations. We talked throughout the academy, we talked two weeks ago, and congratulations, glad you enjoyed it. Thank you for the popcorn machine. Can't use it in a head putter now. So, thank you, and I hope you had fun, and I hope to see you again.
Fantastic, I put my application out already.
Did you? Thank you, thank you for all your support.
Thank you again, guys, this is a fantastic group, one of the best teams we've ever had, we've had some really good ones, so, thank you, it's awesome, you guys are awesome, thank you.
2018 Academy, have that been one of the best ones?
2013?
2019?
2019.
We don't have favorites.
All right, so we're gonna have the council stand up behind, we can kinda, we need to kinda squish and push it back a little bit. Squish and squish.
Go, Harry, go, Harry.
Move this way, center people. Okay? No, no, I'm good.
She can't see you.
Maybe Logan's our honorary mascot.
Congratulations.
I was, I was the original, I had them chase me back when I was in high school. So I did a lot of that Civic Academy stuff when they processed me. Yeah. Oh, man. I've seen it, this patch since 2016.
All right, Dave, we never had enough of each other, let's get rid of it. All right, so we're gonna keep the list of the agenda, and I'm gonna call up our district court judge, Judge Seidel, Judge Seidel's over there, ain't Carolyn Sheridan? Come on down. Judge, come on down.
Oh, there was somebody.
So this is a very important moment, so the town council has two and a half people that are directly in our employ. We have the town attorney, the town manager, and we have half of the municipal court judge. So, rarely seen guy, so you know, get out of your picture, it's kind of a beauty corner out there, we appreciate you being there. So, are you, you're gonna read their files, right? As we go, okay, and then I'll do it. All right, so where is Olivia Lombardo and Eric Fichtner? Come on down. Come on down. All right, so a little bit about Team Court. So these two are the recipients of the Team Court Scholarship, and hopefully we'll get a chance to find out where you're going to school next, what your big plans are, but we gotta brag about you a little bit, not program people getting started. So, Team Court's a community-based deferred prosecution program designed to provide first-time juvenile offenders an alternative response to the traditional criminal justice system. Cases are heard in either peer panel forum or trial setting on a weekly basis. The volunteers for this program, including Eric and Olivia, should I call you Judge? Eric, you go. Must be incredibly responsible and mature as they are tasked with determining appropriate sanctions for each individual juvenile offender in the program which are legally binding. Volunteers must also be trustworthy as they have access to extremely confidential information.
Olivia Lombard says, "Thank you for this amazing opportunity to be one of the 2022 Parker Team Court Scholarship winners. Olivia graduated from Colorado early colleges and will continue attending a reputable community college where she will attend nursing school." Eric says, "I'm incredibly grateful to be awarded the Parker Team Court Scholarship. This fall I will be attending the University of Colorado at Boulder studying aerospace engineering. He has astronomy and astronomical engineering and has had several internships to broaden his experience within this field. He will also be participating in the Air Force ROTC in college and plan to participate in the Engineers About Borders. His goals are to become a pilot in the Air Force and hopefully to become an astronaut."
What's next for you? And just, I know she said a little bit about what you're gonna do, but what's next and what is Team Court, what's the one thing you've taken away from Team Court that's gonna help your future?
I mean, personally for me, there's not really one thing that I can say I've taken away from Team Court, there's been so much to get out of it, and it's really just gonna be the experiences I've had developing skills like leadership, public speaking, and as long goes on, it's always gonna continue to be used in my business.
I agree with, there's not just one thing. I believe that the best tool that we were given is public speaking and being able to not be afraid talking in front of big crowds and just being able to see all the mentoring, the new people in Team Court.
Well, on behalf of all of us on the council, on behalf of the community, thank you for what you do. You know, I think going up, and I've seen Team Court next, and going up before one of your peers has way more impact than going before an adult and, you know, having someone try and work with you there. So, thank you for what you've done with your peers too, it's very impressive, very impressive. So Eric, that's for you, Olivia, that's for you, and then we're gonna get a picture with them and Judge and, oh, I'm sorry, Judge. Go ahead.
Part of the reason that we're here tonight is because these individuals have each received a $1,000 scholarship to their college funded by town council, so they've been selected based upon essays through the Team Court staff, and that's part of the reason I believe we're here tonight.
Here we go, one, two, three, a couple more. One, two, three. Thank you. One, two, and three. Right, thank you. All right, so this next one is a good one, so much so that I gotta take my jacket off for tonight. I gotta don a little bit of an outfit. Is that the square word?
Yeah.
Let's go to our Legend Unified team, come on up. This is my favorite all-time shirt. And coaches are coming down too. So guys, this is, how many are on the team altogether?
Oh, baby.
Not 15?
No, wait, wait.
We got five of us in the program.
Okay, wow, wow. So if you've never been to the Legend Unified, every year, these group, and I've seen some of these guys returning too, battle it out against our Parker Police Department, and you see they're standing back there still, right? Come on, Chief and Deputy Chief, come on down. So, you know, I gotta tell you, our team, I don't know about you, they train hard. Every year they train hard, and by the first quarter, they're out. And you guys just wear them out every time. But you know, we just wanna say thank you for allowing our police officers to join in on this great event and being kinda nice on them, not making that spread what it should be, but also to celebrate five straight years, and this year was not, not anything good. Coach, what was the score this year?
Pretty much.
Pretty much. That's all you really needed to know about that. So we have a certificate for ya to give to you to hang back in the team room, and it says, "Certificate of recognition awarded to the Legend Unified Sports Team, recognizing the Legend Unified Sports Team for their hard work, dedication, and for capturing their fifth straight win over the Parker Police Department." Congratulations. Chief, anything you wanna say? Any tips you want?
I think we should hire you guys to train our guys. Maybe next year we could win, what do you think?
No. It's a great event, we really enjoy it, all of our officers look forward to, you know, playing against you guys, and it's just a fun night, and we love participating locally and we have a lot of fun, so, thank you, congratulations, we'll win. Maybe next year we can, maybe, close that gap.
No.
All right, let's grab a picture, scoot in a little bit, get a picture. Squish, squeeze in a little bit. All right, here we go, one, two, three. One, one, two, three. One, 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 two, three. All right, awesome. All right, really, I have a special picture, so I gave you a certificate, but I would love if you would all sign this game ball as winners, and then we'll display this in town hall. Now, the only deal is, you gotta come back next year and sign it again, if you win.
That was good.
And the crystal ball, right, it's got a crystal ball. So I'm gonna have the coach take this, and you can have the sign and just drop it off when you leave.
Cool.
All right, so, it's not only these winning teams, but I believe Councilman Riveros' alma mada might have won a little bit of a championship this past week, and while they're out of school, Josh wants to recognize Ponderosa High School.
Yes, thank you, no offense to Legend, my kids are in the Legend system now, but Councilman Diack and myself had the honor of graduating from Ponderosa High School many, 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 many years ago, but with that, I wanna take the time to recognize Ponderosa Varsity Boys Baseball. They are two-time champions of baseball. Yep, yep, they are 4A champions, but I'm gonna take a little bit from the article here, and they are gonna be 5A very soon, so if you don't mind, I'm gonna read from the Denver Post. From Class 4A Championship by Kyle Newman, under the headline, "Ponderosa Makes The Case As The Best Team In The State With Repeat Title." "Ponderosa repeated as Class 4A Champions on Saturday and in doing so made the case that they are currently the state's premier high school baseball program. This might upset some people, but we've won 5A, we would've won 5A and would've won 5A this year," Ponderosa Coach Bob Maloney said. "I'm not trying to be arrogant, but we were the best team in the state of Colorado the last two years. The Mustangs run ruled Cheyenne Mountain 11 to 1 at UC Health Park and outscored their seven playoff opponents 89 to 21 while averaging over a dozen runs per game in the regional and state tournaments." And then skipping ahead again to Coach Maloney, "Ponderosa Baseball's always been really good," excuse me, my chair again is failing, as always, "Ponderosa Baseball's always been really good, but we were able to get over the hump the last two years," Maloney said. "Everybody's been asking me, how are you gonna do it in 5A? Well, we already play 5A." And Maloney, Coach Maloney's referring to, they're already in the Continental League, which predominantly is 5A. So, again, well done to Ponderosa Mustangs, we've tried to honor all the winning championship teams, and we've had quite a few here in Parker, so, again, Mustangs carrying on the tradition, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Awesome, thanks, Councilman Rivero, for doing that. Let's give him one more round of applause. All right, guys, we got some work to do tonight too, so it can't be all fun and games. So, first item up is public comments, so public comment is an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak about items not on the agenda. This comment period is open to the first 30 minutes of the meeting, and if there's any further after that, we will get that at the end, and each individual is allowed three minutes to speak, and you must sign up ahead of time, or we can call you when that's time. We also have two other ways, you can email the town clerk's office by 5:00 on the day of the meeting, you can also participate via Zoom. So for, just for the record, we have received one item under a general public comment that will be put into the minutes from June 6th. Do we have anybody else in the room wishing to make a public comment? Chris, how about on Zoom?
There are none.
Okay, thank you, then we'll move on to item number three, and that is reports, items, and comments from mayor and council. I'll start to my left with Councilman Diack.
Thank you very much. On the 17th, I attended the Cultural Commission, I was previously a liaison there, I figured I'd go back and just revisit the old stomping grounds. The commission, great meeting, had some questions regarding the My Main Street presentation, so I discussed that with them. The 18th, I was, I attended the Dr. Cox Board Directors Meeting downtown, that was our first live meeting since COVID. We approved the 2022-2023 budget, and we also approved the Transportation Improvement Plan, or TIP, air quality multimodal regional share. That was about a $40 million allocation, of which $4 million is coming back to Douglas County to Lone Tree for their mobility hub project, so that's a win for Douglas County. The 30th, myself and a few others here, I think all of us, attended the 13th Annual Memorial Day Veterans Service of Remembrance, I will leave that to the others to comment on. The second, I attended the concerts in the park, the first concert in the park of the year for Discovery Park, those will be, those will be in June and July, will not be during Parker Day's week, which is this week, so, not this week, but next Thursday, come on out, great bands all throughout the end of July. And kudos to our Public Works Department, close to 10:00 PM last night, I was messaged about a safety concern in Idlewild. First thing this morning, I messaged our Public Works Director and Town Administrator to let them know, and by the same person who identified this potential safety concern, a little before noon today, they identified resolution. So, very quick turnaround, within 14 hours, we got that taken care of, so kudos to Public Works and their response time, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta.
Thank you. On May 21st, I attended the Senior Law Day in Lone Tree at the Schwab Center, and I gained some really valuable information for our seniors here in Parker, and I distributed that information to both C-Cor cares off of Jordan Road on Main Street, on that area downtown by Southeast Christian Church, and then I also went to the Parker Senior Center to give them that information as well. On May 28th, myself and Mayor Toburg and his daughter attended the Miss Colorado Pageant at the Pace Center, a scholarship program for young ladies in the state of Colorado, and as far as I'm concerned, they're all winners, they were all wonderful, beautiful, outstanding, talented young women from every county in Colorado. On May 30th, I attended the Memorial Day Remembrance at the Parker Cemetery with Councilmember Rivero, Councilmember Hendricks, Councilmember Diack, Councilmember Barrington, and the mayor. And then I enjoyed a lunch with the Parker Rotary Club at the Telgee, and also had the chance to talk to some Parker residents after the ceremony. And then on June 2nd, I also attended the concert in the park with my sons, thank you.
Councilman Hendricks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On May 18th, had the honor of attending the Parker Police Department's award ceremony, was great to see all those individuals, really all of them are winners in my heart, but those individuals that went above and beyond, I believe Councilman Rivero and the mayor and Councilman Hefta was there too. On May 22nd, attended the Science Day by Cask and Parker Arts, a little windy, but wind is science, so hey, that happens. And then the Memorial Day Ceremony, as mentioned by others, at the Parker Cemetery was also a great event, thank you.
Councilman Rivero.
Yeah, it's been covered, Memorial Day, incredibly well-attended, just a great ceremony, got the flyover finally. Our other writers did an excellent job, just, kudos as always to Steve Trevino and all his partners. And then the police officers awards were awesome, what a great team we have, you guys knock it out of the park. I don't know who took the Angel of Mercy badge from, I can't remember his name now, but no longer is Cummings the savior that he used to be, I guess, that's because he's a sergeant now, stripes, he stays in the car, so he doesn't have to get out of the car anymore. And just outstanding, outstanding event, and I can't remember the other event, but that's all I got.
Awesome. Think y'all ended, you wanna go back? Okay. In addition to that, I attended with our deputy town manager the International Council of Shopping Centers in Las Vegas, which you would think is boring, but it's really not, and, you know, the one thing I think I took away from that was that people are very interested in Parker. We had probably, what, about 11, 12 meetings with perspective, and they were, they know who Parker was, they knew our demographics, they knew what they wanted to talk about, so we had a very productive three-day course of meetings, so, but thank you all for attending all those, and again, to the Trevinos for their amazing work with the Memorial Day Service, outstanding. All right, item number five is the Consent Agenda. Consent Agendums are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There'll be no separate discussion for consent items unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinances on the Consent Agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. So council, you have 5A, B, and C up for your approval tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve items 5A, B, and C, please.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Councilman Rivero, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Rivero?
Right.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Diack?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes four to zero. Do I need to report that it's too absent? We've never had too absent at the time.
You did report it when you reconvened the town council meeting.
Okay, but not on a vote, okay, perfect, thank you, ma'am. Next item up is our public hearings, we have three public hearings tonight, and the first one is with three pieces, so I'm gonna go and open the public hearing from Newland Crossing up at 7:25. This is Newland Crossing Sketch Plan, Preliminary Plan, and Annexation Amendment, and I believe Brianna Simon's gonna be running it with us. So council, just as a reminder, we're gonna go through the staff presentation, ask the staff question, you have a applicant, Brianna?
Yes.
Do they have a presentation?
Yes.
Awesome, we have a presentation by the applicant, then we'll have questions of the applicant, we'll open it up for public hearing, we will, I'm sorry, for public comment, we'll give the applicant a chance to address anything that came up during public comment, and then we'll close it for a debate and vote, so that'll be the process we go through each of these. So ma'am, I'll turn it over to you.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, mayor and town council, this is a proposal for a sketch and preliminary plan for Newland Crossing, along with an annexation agreement amendment. The subject property is located on the northeast corner of Main Street and Chambers Road. The applicant PCS Group is requesting the approval of the sketch and preliminary plan for the area highlighted in red on the screen. The sketch and preliminary plan applications are for 194 single-family detached residential lots, 26.85 acres of open space, and 6.03 acres of park space. The proposed sketch and preliminary plan identifies the layout of the subdivision to meet the standards outlined in the Land Development Ordinance, the Newland Crossing Plan Development, and the related roadway and stormwater design criteria manuals. The annexation agreement for the Newland Crossing development outlines the amount of parks, open space, and trails dedication required. For both the sketch and preliminary plan, the applicant is proposing a total of 6.03 acres of park space shown in the green areas on the screen. This exceeds the minimum amount of park space required and includes three neighborhood parks. The applicant is proposing 26.85 acres of open space, which satisfies the minimum requirements of open space. The trail systems are proposed to provide connectivity throughout the development. The proposed project will provide sidewalks and trails connecting to neighboring subdivisions. The development will also provide a regional trail connection along the Newland Gulch Regional Trail that will close a missing link between Stonegate to the north and Meridian to the south. The proposed sketch and preliminary plan meets the obligations outlined in the annexation agreement and the Town's Land Development Ordinance. Newland Crossing Development will be served by Main Street and Chambers Road, which is shown in red. A new collector road will be constructed to support the local road connections through the community and between arterial roads, which is through the community and between arterial roads, which is shown in blue. Additionally, a new connection to the existing Carousel Farms neighborhood will be provided for connectivity, which is shown in purple. Also being discussed tonight is the First Amendment to the Newland Crossing Annexation Agreement. This agreement was originally entered into in 2016. The current annexation agreement does not permit the Metropolitan District to be an accepting party for open space if the development contains fewer than 400 residential dwelling units. The proposed First Amendment to the Newland Crossing Annexation Agreement removes this restriction to allow the Newland Crossing Metropolitan District to be an accepting party for open space regardless of how many residential units are in the development. The proposed annexation agreement amendment aligns with the current town standards for metropolitan Staff has reviewed the proposal and as outlined in the staff report has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan. The project meets the minimum requirements of the Land Development Ordinance and the Newland Crossing Plan Development. The project provides adequate access, infrastructure, drainage facilities, and design considerations. Utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability. All referral agency comments have been addressed, and the public knows the requirements have been met. Planning Commission heard this item on May 12th and recommended approval. Therefore, staff and planning commission recommend town council approve the Newland Crossing Sketch and Preliminary Plan. Additionally, staff also recommends that town council approve the First Amendment to the Newland Crossing Annexation Agreement. Staff is available for any questions that you may have, and the applicant is also available this evening to answer questions and has a presentation tonight.
Excellent. So we'll go with staff questions first. Councilman Hendricks?
None yet.
Councilmember Rivero?
Yes, thank you. I noticed in the summary referral agency comments on the planning commission report, there was an outstanding comments regarding Stonegate Metropolitan District and arterial connection. And they acknowledged, Stonegate did in that comment, that those issues would be addressed at a later date. Can you talk specifically about when those issues would be addressed?
That will be addressed during final plat and the review process during that process.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Councilman Dayak?
No questions, mayor.
Councilmember Hendricks? I'm sorry, Hefta? It's all the H's together.
None at this time.
Great, thank you. Brenda, do you want to introduce the applicant and their presentation?
Yes, we have Al Cunningham with PCS Group.
Welcome, sir. So if you will state your name and address for the record before you get started, and you have up to 30 minutes to talk. So I'm not going to set the timer. I'm just going to go on the honor system here.
Okay. I guarantee I'll be under that.
Okay.
Alan Cunningham with PCS Group, 200 Calamath Street, Denver, 80223. Thank you, council members. On behalf of Lennar, pleased to give you a brief presentation tonight. Do you have it pulled up? Couple of our slides will be redundant, so I'll go through them quickly. We do have members of our team with Westwood here as well as myself, so I'm doing planning. Westwood did the civil engineering, and members of Lennar to answer questions for you. Next slide, please. Can we just?
You have to hit that little enabling. There you go. Hit that little yellow bar. Not that one.
They're not animated or anything, so we could just click on you. Oh, there we go. So as Brianna indicated, Newland Crossing sites, just over 100 acres located at the intersection, the northeast corner of East Main Street and South Chambers Road. Next Try that little arrow in the corner, maybe. We could just click through the ones on the left. They'd probably still be big enough
Click slide two.
There you go.
So yeah, just click on the next one. There we go. So just to give you a little bit more context, here we took the sketch plan sort of rendered up and overlaid it on the site in bird's eye perspective, just to give you the context of where it sits relative to Chambers and Main Street. And you can see Newland Gulch bisecting the site, as well as some of the surrounding residential neighborhoods. Next slide, please. So this is extrapolated from the PD. I did color a couple of those parcels. I don't know if it shows up on your screen better than the big screen, but wanted to just show that from the PD, we are compliant with it. It's, again, shows Newland Gulch bisecting the site, and PA 1 and PA 2 are essentially the two parcels that have the proposed residential on them tonight that are part of the preliminary plan and sketch plan. So next slide, please. So on here, they're highlighted on the right side of the slide. Obviously, you see PA 1. Within the PD, there's 150 units allowed. We're proposing 109. PA 2 allows more units because there's a single-family or multifamily designation on there. So it allows 200 units. We're proposing 85 units. That came about after working with the neighborhood to the north and speaking with them and some of their concerns over density. And so that's a single-family neighborhood as well with 85 units. The other parcels that are shown on there, PA 3, 4, and 5, are, at this point, unbuildable tracks. PA 3 and 4 are commercial ground that are retained by the land seller that Lennar did not purchase, so those will be commercial in the future by others. And PA 5 is ground that Lennar did purchase, and we're in process with staff on another site plan for that for some townhomes. Next slide, please. So this one, we screened back the development parcels and the lots just to highlight the parks. It was the same slide Brianna had up there. The important components of this are that there's three neighborhood parks proposed within the community. One that we're calling the Central Park down off of West Parker Road, the collector that connects Main Street up to Chambers. And then there's, given the site being bisected by the gulch, there's a couple of small parks in the northeast and the northwest portions of the property as well for those residents. And then there's also, in total, going to be three-quarters of a mile of regional trail. And actually, if we go to the next slide, that one will show the trail connections even better. So two segments that you can see on here, the one on the left shows a regional trail connection that'll go from Main Street past West Parker Road all the way up to the northern portion of the property that will be built by Lennar. And to clarify, I made a mistake at the planning commission. I had said that the southern piece adjacent to the commercial would be built by the commercial owner, but it will not be. Lennar's obligation will be to build that regional trail all the way through the Newland Crossing property. And then the section to the north, which we've blown up, that you can see, there's another, about a third of a mile of regional trail connection that's needed to connect to the existing trail. And we have worked with the Stonegate Village Metro District on that connection. The details, as you had questioned, well, the details of just kind of final CDs will be down the road, but we've come to agreement with them that that will get built as well to make that regional connection. Next slide, please. So just quickly showing you some blowups of the parks. The Central Park here, anticipated to include, this was worked on with the district as well. They wanted us to have a feature that would bring people into the parks here as well. So there's a splash pad. With that, there's a restroom and mechanical building in association with it, a couple shade shelters, tables and benches, a playground for kids of both ages, from the younger ages up through the 5 through 12, and then some open turf areas as well. Next slide, please. And this one just shows some perspectives of that. You can see in the bottom left, the splash pad in the background, a couple different shade structures depending upon which portion of the park you're in. Next slide, please. So the northwest park, as you can see, it's linear in nature. There's a buffer in that area that buffers towards the residential to the north, and this park is linear along it with trail connectivity that goes over to Chambers, comes all the way over to Newland Gulch as well. Also has a playground included, some open turf areas, shade structure as well, tables and benches. There's outdoor exercise equipment along that trail connection, some cornhole, so that there's games included, and there are bike racks as well. Next slide, So in the northeast corner, as you can see here, some larger turf areas, again, another playground so that there's accessible to the kids that live sort of on either side of the gulch in the community. There's also some outdoor exercise equipment in here since we have the trail connectivity between them, more games with concrete table tennis and bike racks in this park as well. Next slide, please. So we wanted to include something to give you just an idea of some of the homes that Lennar is proposing. These are model homes from different communities, but from the lineups that would be built here. So I think they give you a good idea of some of the style of the homes. However, I should point out that obviously here at Newland Crossing, there'll be driveways connecting to the garage doors as opposed to that beautiful landscaping. Next slide, please. So again, the colors are a little bit light on here. Hopefully, they show up better on your screen. The colors in pink, so on the page right on the eastern side, and then up on the northern edge on the western side, would be considered Phase 1. And then the blue area, so south of the pink on the northwestern side, would be Phase 2. And then there's a yellow area that's the PA 5 down towards Main Street, which is that portion with the townhomes that's currently in process as a site plan with staff. All of that said, Lennar is planning on getting going on this once all the entitlements and approvals are in place and sort of building it as one, but that's kind of the direction that that phasing will occur in. Next slide, please. So in wrapping up, we're excited to be here. We've worked for a long time with staff. We're bringing a plan before you that's compliant with the PD and the town code, as Brianna mentioned. We're proposing on these two parcels 194 single-family homes. So that's within what's allowed on the PD. There's just over six acres of parks proposed. The PD required 4.63, so an increase there over what would be required in the PD. Similarly, with open space, there's a little under 27 acres of open space, whereas the PD was requiring 18.87. There'll be nearly three-quarters a mile of 10-foot concrete regional trail providing the connectivity between communities to the north and south. And then there's also another mile or so of internal trails within the community, so that we are hoping to promote an active lifestyle for the residents here. Next slide, please. And that's our wrapping up slide. So with that, I think I was under a half an hour.
Just barely.
We do have members of our team here to answer any questions you might have.
Awesome. We'll start the questioning with Councilmember Hendricks.
Thank you. Just curious, what, you said you talked to the surrounding neighborhoods or communities. What was the feedback?
Generally, there was some concern with, just with the PD, with some higher density, mostly on that western side to the north. And so in talking with them, we agreed that on that side, we would, it was allowed for single-family or multifamily, and so that's when we decided to put the single-family neighborhood in there and keep that density down a little bit.
Okay. You know, tougher question. How many cornhole sets will it be?
I'd have to look into the landscape plans more closely. I think there's at least one in each of those other parks. I don't, there could be multiples. I'd have to look at them more closely.
Thank you.
Did you ask about pickleball courts? Is that what you were asking?
A cornhole.
Okay. But pickleball, too?
Pickleball, other than pickleball. None proposed at this time.
Councilman Rivero?
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation. Just one quick question. You referred to planning areas 3, 4, and 5 as unbuildable, a technical term that we all understand. But for the edification of the public, could you talk about what an unbuildable track is, and it's not unbuildable in perpetuity, is it?
It is not. Through the PD, there are other entitlements approved down the road, but when defined as a track now, that basically renders them unbuildable until more plans come before the city to ensure that what's planned for them is in keeping with the town code and the PD for those particular parcels.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Councilman Dayak?
Councilmember Hendricks had my question. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, just how many entrances and exits do you have from your community?
So can we pull that back up and just maybe like the second last slide? You'll see that there's, West Parker Road is a collector that's coming through connecting to Main Street and Chambers. And then we have multiple local roads off of that that go into the neighborhood, as well as a connection to the east into Carousel Farms. So I guess from the community proper, there's one going out east to Carousel Farms, and then two, one down to Main Street and one over to Chambers as well, with multiple locals collecting to that collector to spread out to those three points.
Great. And then within the community, do you have islands within those subdivisions? Or is it, do you have an island between the house, between the homes on the streets, or no?
An island, like a median in the roads?
No, a median in the middle between one tract of houses and another. Or do you just have a street in between?
Just the streets.
And then how wide is that street that's complying with the Land Use Development Ordinance?
Off the top of my head, I'm not remembering the exact section. It is compliant with the local standard. Do you remember what it is, Brianna? Is it 60-foot right of way?
50.
55? According to Alex, it's a 55-foot right of way on that logo.
Okay. And that is, that's a wider street that, as in years past, correct?
No, it's a standard focal.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll, if there's any other public comment on this, we'll allow you to address that, too. So, all right, we will open up the public comment period for this at 7:45. Anyone wishing to make a public comment on the Newland Crossing Sketch Plan, Preliminary Plan, and Annexation Amendment, please come forward. Oh, come on down, sir. And if you will.
I'm Paul Twombly. I'm a resident here in Parker. We're in the Idlewild neighborhood, very close to the Fika Coffee House, which I enjoy immensely.
Excellent. And did you state your address?
Yeah, it's 21490 East Idlewild.
Okay, great. We'll go ahead and give you three minutes.
Excellent. So I have one quick question. I noticed that you had quite a bit of acreage dedicated to parks and open area, which is fantastic. But given today, that I just received in the mail from the city of Parker, watering restrictions on when I should and should not water, whether it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, whatever, has consideration been given in this development, given the amount of open space and the amount of grass? How much water is going to be used this year, next year, and so forth as you go forward? Because that's a consideration I think everybody in Parker should be looking at. I came from California a year ago, and let me tell you, I've lived through 10 years of drought and watched all my lawn and all my plants die. So given we're in Colorado, we're starting it into the summer season, has that been considered in the plan?
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else wishing to make public comment? Room. So then, Chris, do we have anybody on Zoom?
There is not.
All right. Would the applicant like to address anything about water usage landscaping?
Sure. In working with the landscape plans, we've been working with the town landscape architect and trying to really find that balance of having some multipurpose turf areas, but certainly not going overboard with them, and meeting the town standards for where there could be turf areas. And outside of those, there'll be a lot of native seed areas. And then within the plant palette as well, looking to use xeric plants that can survive on, you know, a good drip system, but certainly less water. So we're definitely being cognizant of that and working to make the landscape plans as xeric as possible while still providing the needs of the town and meeting the needs of the parks.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to then close the public hearing on this at 7:47 and bring it back to council. I'm going to start with Councilmember Hefta on any comments, debate, thoughts?
No debate. Just a few comments. I appreciate the amount of open space and park space that this development group has come up with for our residents. I also appreciate your forward thinking on the splash pad and the shade structures. I, myself, am trying to convince my own husband for a shade structure for our house because of the very hot Colorado sun. And it's very forward-thinking of you to, for the folks that are moving here from California and other western states, because Parker's such a beautiful place to live. And I also appreciate your hard work, working within the Land Development Ordinance on zoning, density, height, lot size, coverage, landscaping, off-street parking, and also miscellaneous issues. miscellaneous issues. Thank you.
Councilman Dyak?
Thank you very much. No, I mean, I think the applicant's presentation was 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 good. It satisfied, again, reinforced what staff told us in the the criteria that we needed to apply to, to determine if this is a for or against. I like the last, I think the the second to last slide, giving us how they have exceeded the criteria in a number of, number of roles, including open space. And the only note I have is that the town of Parker does not do water. So it's probably Water, Parker Water and Sanitation, who who gave you that that email, were great, great partners with them and certainly seek their and heed their advice. Thank you very much.
Councilman Hendricks?
Thank you, Mayor. I will go with the other councilmembers said. I appreciate the open space and I appreciate the lower density. And I agree that they, this project meets the criteria set forth by staff.
Great. And Councilman Rivero?
Thank you. Again, carrying forward the the theme. First, your cooperative nature. Appreciate you listening to your neighbors to the north. Stonegate is an excellent neighborhood. While I'm not in the town, still very active and and important neighbors of ours. I I do acknowledge your use of the open space for even a greater buffer than than was required and and appreciate that design. I also appreciate you keeping your homes central and allowing the buffer, for the most part, to circle your your properties, thus protecting your future residents from the commercial that's going to be near them and and so on. So well-designed. I do appreciate it. I do appreciate Mr. Trombley's comment to native as possible. I hope you think evergreen and not deciduous. And, you know, we'll, we'll get that in the books, I hope, sometime soon. It it is, it is definitely the future. I I definitely think we should start thinking of that. And I know all our pretty pictures show 25-year Elms, and that's just not probably possible in in Parker. But we'll get there. I I find the proposal submitted complies with the 2035 master plan, the land development ordinance, and the applicable zoning requirements. All conditions of the previous plans have been met, and all meeting notices have been posted. And then lastly, on a personal note, I appreciate the West Parker Road, because back in the day, that was the dirt road that ran out there for us, Old Guard. So, well done.
Good deal. All right, council. With that, I will entertain a motion on the sketch plan for the Newland Crossings.
I move to approve the sketch plan based on staff findings contained in the staff report.
A second.
And that motion was made by Councilman Hendricks, seconded by Councilmember Hefte. Rivero?
Right.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Hefte?
Yes.
And that passes four to zero. Next up is the preliminary plan on the Newland Crossings.
I move to approve the preliminary plan based on staff findings contained in the staff report.
A second.
Motion is made by Councilman Hendricks, seconded by Councilmember Hefte. Rivero?
Right.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Hefte?
Yes.
And that passes four to zero. Last step on this project is the First Amendment to Newland Crossing Annexation Agreement.
I move to approve the First Amendment to the Newland Crossing Annexation Agreement.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilman Rivero, seconded by Councilman Hendricks. Rivero?
Right.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Hefte?
Yes.
And that passes four to zero. Thank you all. As Brianna swaps places with Julia. All right, next up is a public hearing on the Parker Auto Plaza F2 AMD 3 L1B B2 Autobody Shop, which is a used by special review. So I will go ahead and open up this hearing at 7:52, and we will turn it over to Julia Duncan.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for having me this evening. Before you is the Parker Auto Plaza, Automart USA, used by special review. The applicant, Automart USA, is requesting a used by special review to change an existing building to allow for an autobody shop with a paint booth. The site is located on the west side of Ponarosa Drive, north of Lincoln Avenue. The Parker Auto Plaza PD was established in 2002 as a receiving zone for auto sales and repair in the town, meeting the automotive and retail needs of the community. On December 13th of 2021, Town Council adopted revisions to the planned development to expand the permitted uses within the commercial use areas. Service establishments was expanded to include Automotive Repair Major, an establishment primarily engaged in providing vehicle repair, bodywork, mechanical repair for engines and drivetrains and/or painting, as a used by special review. Automotive Repair Major, as a used by special review, permits additional automotive services to meet community demand, but requires an enhanced level of review evaluation under the nine special review criteria. The property is located within the central commercial corridor area as designated by the Parker 2035 Master Plan. This area is intended to provide commercial uses which focus on retail, services, lodging, restaurants, and entertainment. The requested use of a paint booth is consisted with, consistent with the allowed uses by special review within the Parker Auto Plaza PD and consolidates this kind of use to help encourage centralization and limit the dispersion of uses townwide. The used by special review for a paint booth is consistent with existing and permitted uses within the district and reinforces the Parker Auto Plaza as providing an array of auto-related services within a centralized automotive district. The site plan approval is administrative. It's not before you this evening, but I did want to speak to it because it's some of the mitigating factors that would allow for a used by special review. The only physical changes to the property are going to be roof screening panels for the paint booth exhaust and a new screening wall around the existing parking lot. All materials will match the existing buildings. As far as environmental impacts, all construction and operations will be in compliance with EPA and OSHA regulations. There's no onsite storage in excess of code requirements, which is limited to 25% onsite and must meet the design standards for screening. The noise ordinance is also applicable to the site. The facility will be used primarily to recondition cars for sale by local car dealers. The shop will employ four body technicians, two painters, two body paint helpers, a detailer, a manager, and an estimator, and one off, one office manager. There's no long-term storage of vehicles intended. The shop, when completed, will have six workstations for disassembly, repair, and reassembly. The painting portion of the facility will consist of a double paint booth and a mixing room. The paint booths will be located on the north end of the building, and it's intended that vehicles will enter, enter through the south, roll up doors, and progress through the various workstations. The last stop will be the paint booths, and they will exit through the north doors when paintwork is complete. All painting will be contained within the paint booths. No painting will be performed in other areas of the building or property. And the paint booth is a new state-of-the-art unit compliant with all applicable regulations. It will be properly vented to provide a safe environment for employees and to prevent escape of byproducts. There are nine criteria used to evaluate a used by special review. These criteria ensure that the use will be in harmony and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas and neighborhoods. The proposal is consistent with the master plan, and there are adequate services to serve the proposed site. After evaluating the zoning information, staff has determined that the proposal meets the nine approval criteria set forth in the land development ordinance. The project is consistent with the master plan, and the use will be consistent with the surrounding area, and will not result in an overuse of the land, create traffic congestion, or be detrimental to the town. Staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project satisfies the nine criteria required by the land development ordinance for a used by special review, and referral agency comments have been addressed. The Planning Commission held a public hearing for the used by special review on May 26 of 2022 and voted unanimously to recommend the Town Council approve the application. Staff and the Planning Commission recommend that the Town Council approve the Parker Auto Plaza filing to Amendment 3 Lot 1B 2 Autobody Shop Used by Special Review request to allow a paint booth in an existing autobody shop, subject to the 10 conditions contained in staff's report. This concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions you may have. The applicant is also here to share a few words. He does not have a presentation, but is happy to answer any questions.
Awesome. Thank you. We'll start with questions of staff. Councilmember Hefte?
Not at this time.
Councilman Dyak?
No questions, thank you.
Councilman Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilman Rivero?
Thank you. You mentioned no onsite storage, yet 25% storage. Could you elaborate on that, please?
So the applicant hasn't intended for any onsite storage. The 25% is part of our LDO ordinance, which caps onsite stores townwide by 25%. So while there's been no disclosure of onsite storage, if in the case that there would be some ancillary use in the future for, you know, leaving some vehicles onsite for maybe a day or two until they're picked up by a local dealer, that would be capped at 25% because it's a townwide code requirement.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Excellent. All right, Julia, you want to introduce the applicant?
Yes, we have Dan Ramirez here from Automart USA.
Great. Welcome, sir.
Good evening.
If you will state your name and address for the record, and I will give you the same 30 minutes if you'd like it.
Thank you. My name's Dan Ramirez. I live at 7808 Stone Dale Drive in Castle Pines.
Excellent.
I don't have a lot to add to what Julia has stated. We're just trying to get our body shop open. It's not going to be a public area where a lot of traffic will, will be generated. We're building a state-of-the-art facility that shouldn't disturb anyone, and there won't be a lot of emissions. And we're not going to have a lot of wrecked cars sitting around. We're looking primarily at lightly damaged vehicles that can be quickly reconditioned and sold by local dealers. We currently have a facility at Lincoln and 20 Mile Retail Auto Facility, and that's our main client.
Excellent. Excellent. We'll start off with some questions, if you will. Councilman Rivero?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Councilman Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilman Dyak?
No questions.
Councilmember Hend, Hefte?
Just a little bit more about the parking. So sometimes in these situations with autobody repair, the parking seems awfully tight of getting in and out in, for the few that I've seen in Parker so far. And cars are jammed up on top of one another, and you can't get your car out. Could you elaborate a little bit on that?
Well, we've done a couple of things to mitigate that. We have, if you look at the
It's in our packets.
Well, let me move on to my second question.
We'll, we'll come back as soon as.
I can address that without the site plan. It's basically almost a rectangle. And at the southern end of the site is a screened parking area that has approximately 26 parking spaces, which is screened behind the masonry wall. Then just to the north of that, we have a canopy which covers, which is, covers the cars, but it doesn't really screen them. That's more for post-repair cars that are waiting for pickup. And then we have some employee and customer parking to the north of that, and then the building, and then about five or six additional parking spaces to the north of the building. So we don't plan to, to bring heavily damaged cars, like you see at a lot of body shops, that do insurance repair and personal, private clients. This is just lightly damaged stuff that we can touch up and sell. So we don't anticipate that they'll be sitting around for a long time. I can preface that with the supply chain issues. Occasionally, we're going to have trouble getting parts. So something might sit there for a while, but it will be screened if it's going to be there for more than a day or two. And it's anticipated that any car awaiting repair is going to be in the screened area.
Thank you. That answers that question. And then the second question was, there is a, a fence or some type of barrier around the property because there seems to be a charter school to the north of the property? So do you have a wall or a fence by that charter school, or?
No. The charter school is, we're at the southern tip of the, their property, which is where their main drive-in access is. So our building is probably 200 to 300 feet from the closest building of the school, which is modular buildings that they have on the southern end of the property. And no, no fencing was required. No children are ever in that area. It's the, it's all contained at the school and to the north of the school where their play area is. So we don't anticipate that to be a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. We are going to open this for public comment at this time. Anyone in the room wishing to make public comment on the Parker Auto Plaza special review? Seeing none. Chris, do we have anybody on Zoom?
There is not.
Okay. So then we are going to close this public hearing at 8:04 and bring it back to the council for final comments, debates, anything. And I'm going to start with Councilman Hendricks.
No real comments. It looks like a great, worthy project. Thank you.
Councilman Rivero?
Thank you. I appreciate the screening. Where'd you go? You're hiding behind there. Sir Ramirez, thank you. I appreciate the screening of of your staging area, if you will. It's not, not cheap masonry wall, but well done. And and thank you for that. And and I will just say thank you again. Previously, you were in front of us for an application, and your your cooperative nature with our staff was outstanding. I see that again here in this application. So thank you. And and so referencing the nine criteria that that are presented in front of us, truly appreciate your answers on seven and nine. Seven being will not cause significant air, water, and noise pollution. You have incredible standards that you have to meet all the way to the federal level. You've addressed that. Staff reiterates what you've addressed in greater detail. So thank you for that. And then nine will not otherwise be detrimental to the health, safety, welfare, present and future inhabitants of the town. Again, your answer here is truly appreciated. The owners live in Parker and have other businesses here. We have to raise families here, too. I just wanted to point that for record. Thank you for a truthful answer, and and appreciate that. And staff, in more technical terms, said you also will honor that. So thank you for your answers. I find that you've met all nine criteria.
Councilman Dyak?
Thank you very much. No, I mean, I think this is, this type of business, along with this application, is more consistent with the Parker Auto Plaza and thematically what what was discussed way, way back when we, when I, in a prior life, was a part of doing the original plating. So, you know, if if Burke would have, would have had their druthers, this, this would have been built long before with, with businesses quite like your own already populated this. So, you know, finally, it's a, I think it's about time that, that some of this area is, is being, is being developed and put towards what it was originally intended for. So thank you very much.
And Councilmember Hefte?
Yes, I would reiterate that it meets the nine criteria and for a used by special review. And again, this area was developed as an automotive plaza, and our master plan allows for an automotive plaza uses in this area. And you have complied and worked very cooperatively with our staff. Thank you so much.
Great. With that, I will entertain a motion on the approval of the used by special review.
I move to approve based on the staff findings, including the conditions contained in the staff report.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilman Rivero, seconded by Councilman Dyak. Rivero?
Right.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Hefte?
Yes.
And that passes four to zero. Next up is Dogtopia. Awesome. We will open up the public hearing on the Dogtopia used by special review at 8:07 and turn it back over to Julia. And I believe you have an applicant tonight as well.
We do have an applicant here tonight with a presentation. And my colleague, Carson Bayerhoff, did this outstanding report and presentation, and sends his apologies for not being able to be here this evening. But I will be speaking on behalf of my colleague, Carson, for this report.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you for having us this evening. This is a proposal for a used by special review to allow for the expansion of an observation kennel and a pet daycare facility for Dogtopia. Dogtopia, a franchise kenneling and pet day, daycare facility, is proposing to locate in an existing vacating unit located at 10140 Park Glen Way. The subject property is located at the northeast corner of Dransvelt Road and Park Glen Way in the Park Glen West subdivision. The proposed use will be going in the southern unit of the eastern building of the lot. This lot has one other multi-tenant building to the west. This property is located within a light industrial zoning district, which requires the used by special review for observation kennels and pet daycare facilities. The proposed use is appropriate in the zoning district as there are no sensitive uses in the near vicinity of the area. The 7,570 square foot unit is roughly half of the area of the building proposed to be occupied. Additionally, the applicant is proposing an 1,800 to 1,900 square foot outdoor play area. Typical store hours are between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. The applicant is working with staff concerning additional onsite improvements. These improvements These improvements will help with the services of the operation in addition to improving the aesthetic conditions of the area. Improvements include a decorative fence around the outdoor play area and replacing dead landscaping supplemented to additional landscaping. The proposed use will not conflict with the current parking, which is appropriate for multi-tenant uses and is more suitable for their operations. Since their Denver Tech Center opening in 2020, the applicants have had zero emergency calls from medical, police, or fire services. Facility waste will be routinely collected, and a smaller waste station will be provided outside the confined part of the facility. In addition to the conditions outlined in the staff report, the applicant has provided specific plans to demonstrate mitigation of odor and noise. Concerning noise, the franchise has a noise control plan which has proven to be effective in other areas. The outdoor play area will be in between the masonry structure that the facility is housed and the neighboring masonry wall for a self-storage business directly to the east. Together, a vinyl fence, masonry material, and landscape buffering around the outdoor play area will be provided. The proposed use will be consistent with the goals and strategies outlined in the master plan and the strategic plan. There are nine criteria used to evaluate a use by special review. These criteria ensure that the use will be consistent with the surrounding area, will not result in an overuse of the land, create traffic congestion, or be detrimental to the town. Subject to the staff recommended conditions outlined in the staff report, the proposed use will meet all nine criteria items needed for recommended approval. The Planning Commission held a public hearing for the use by special review on May 12, 2022, and voted unanimously to recommend that Town Council approve the application. Staff has reviewed the proposal, and as outlined within the staff report, has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan, and the project satisfies the nine criteria required in the land development ordinance. The public notice requirements have been met. Staff in the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the use by special review request to allow for up to 8,000 square feet indoor and 2,000 square feet outdoor space for an observation kennel and pet daycare facility in the light industrial zoning district with the seven conditions outlined in staff's report. Thank you for your time and attention. I'm available for any questions you may have. The applicant also has a presentation available, and it's Larry Green with Dogtopia.
Excellent. Well, let's go for staff questions first. Great picture there, too, by the way. Councilman Dyak, any questions?
My only question was noise, and I think we addressed that in the proposal. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
I'll save my questions for the applicant. Thank you.
Councilman Hendricks?
No questions.
And Councilman Rivera?
It does go towards noise. What are the noise levels allowed inside the light industrial? Is that stated?
I think it's still applicable to our noise ordinance, which was recently adopted. And I want to say it's 500 feet from a commercial zone to the nearest residential, and there is no residential within the vicinity of this property.
Thank you very much.
All right. Julia, you want to introduce the applicant?
We have Larry Green here this evening with Dogtopia.
Good evening, sir. And if you will, state your name and address for the record, and I'll give you the same offer no one's taken. But you got 30 minutes to talk about this.
That's generous. I was still five minutes. But I won't take that much time. My name is Larry Green. I live at 10741 Timber Dash Avenue in Highlands Ranch, 80126. And thank you for considering us tonight. We're very excited to be in Parker. We've been looking in Parker for two and a half years and finally found the right location with the right zoning. It's perfect for us. We're excited about it. My son is here, Brandon Green. He's the, this is the general manager of our first store. He graduated from Michigan State University with a degree in animal science. He's a Parker resident, getting married next month. So, and then our, I was going to mention also, our marketing manager is also a Parker resident, and she's really excited to open this store. We've been looking for a long time. So rather than flip through this presentation, which probably could take 30 minutes, I wanted to just make eight points, and then I'll flip through a few slides, and that may spur some questions, because I'd rather answer your questions than tell you a bunch of things that you're not interested in. But the first thing I would say is, hang on a minute. We are primarily a daycare business. Most of your businesses here related to dogs are daycare and boarding, and we are as well. But our focus has flipped. 80% of our business is daycare, 15% is boarding, 5% is spa, which is basically giving dogs baths. So that's what we do. It's not as much overnight as most of the facilities that are existing today. It's a family-owned business, which means Brandon and I own it. It's personal. It's especially personal here in Parker. But it's also a franchise business. And when we set out to do this, we chose a franchise because there's a lot that goes into taking care of dogs from a science and environmental safety and training standpoint. Brandon worked in some independent dog daycares back in Michigan. They kind of threw them out there and said, "Go watch these 30 yards," and two dogs, didn't tell them how to, two yards, 30 dogs, didn't tell them how to clean, didn't tell them how to break up scuffles. And that's legal, but not what we wanted to do. So that's why we went with a franchise model, and are really glad that we did that. The good news for Parker is that we've opened our first store already, which was in the Denver Tech Center. As I said, we've been looking for two and a half years here. That one came up first. We've operated it for two years. We were awarded the best new store at our annual franchisee meeting this year. So out of the 30 new stores that opened this year, based on safety and quality, customer satisfaction and growth, we were awarded the top store in the country. And Brandon was awarded the top general manager of all 200 stores in the country. So we take those procedures very seriously, and we get audited by our franchise or regularly, too. So the things regarding safety, cleanliness, noise, and customer satisfaction are things that we manage very closely. The other, the fifth point I wanted to make of the eight was foundation. When we looked at this franchise, they talked about their foundation, and most businesses do. This particular franchise is really dedicated to it. We spent 50% of our time at our franchise meeting, which was two days, working on foundation issues. The foundation, the cause that we support are service dogs for vets. So we spent time, a lot of time, with service dogs and their vets at the meeting. And it's just really important. As we do fundraising events every single week in our store, we'll be work involved in the community whenever we can be to raise for this service. And we've now funded two service dogs, and we're really proud of that and excited about it. And for me personally, at this stage of micro, it's been the best thing about this business is how much satisfaction I've gotten from the foundation aspect of it and meeting these vets. The seventh thing I wanted to mention is some of the questions that I started to hear raised, and I'll answer your questions. But because it's a franchise business, there's 200 locations approximately. The design of these buildings have been improved over time and tested. And these particular facilities, Dogtopia focuses on retail strip malls, which is where we are in the Denver Tech Center. Some of them are in urban locations, and some of them are in locations very similar to what we have here. But really, a lot of focus on noise control and odor control so we can be good neighbors. I was, last week, we have one neighbor in our tech center store with a demising wall, and I ran into, when I went into his suites last week, and sat right in his office, right next to one of our dog playrooms at a very busy time, and did not hear a single peep. So he was very happy with that. But the other things related to this design of the building is the state-of-the-art HVAC. The playrooms that the dogs are in are all separated. They go roof deck to floor insulated walls, so each room is individually insulated, which keeps noise down tremendously. And each room has special HVAC systems, which replaces the air every 12 minutes in the room. So when you walk into our dog playrooms, it's typically fresher than most offices that you'll walk into because of that. And all of the cleaning materials we use, unlike the bleach that Brandon was using and is independent, are all approved by an environmental biologist and staff. Effective for the dogs, environmentally friendly, and safe for the dogs and effective for cleaning. So a lot of thought has gone into this. We chose this franchise because they do it right. We've embraced it, and we operate that way as well. And the last thing I would say is, we've looked for two and a half years, and we could not have found a better location, both for the town of Parker, because we think it's underserved, but also because there's just no neighborhoods. The outdoor spaces where most questions come up on noise, and I heard that raised already, and there's a lot of noise studies that have been done by Dogtopia. And with the vinyl fences being eight feet tall, the residential noise standard, I think it's 57 decibels, is met at a distance of 80 feet. So a lot of Dogtopias you will find proximate to residential areas. That is not the case here. We have one neighbor that will face this outdoor area, and it's nothing but a huge brick wall with self-storage garages on the other side without people. And it's so, it's a great from that standpoint as well. So what I'd like to do is very quickly flip through some of the photographs, because that may spur some questions, and I'll answer questions. Back up. Okay. Go one more. That's our award presentation. The young woman in the middle with her dark hair is our marketing manager, who I mentioned is Parker resident, along with her husband. Go ahead. Keep going. This is our first service dog, and we also work with an organization that not only helps the vets, but they are taking high-potential dogs from kill shelters, which is what Whiskey Bravo is. And he's in training right now. I get reports on him every day. So it's a win-win. Go ahead. Keep going. I'm just going to look at some photographs. Keep going. That's a picture of us. So I think in Phoenix, you can see it's, the finishes on it, if it, a retail center, you can keep going. I put this store in because it's Omaha. It looks most similar to the building we're going into here in Parker. I think our building's a little more attractive than that, but it's close. Go ahead. That's a store in Portland, Oregon. I put that one in because you can see there's offices residential around. Dogs are playing in there, and they're great neighbors. Go ahead. That's an overview, an old overview of our store that has three playrooms. We'll have four. The thing I wanted to mention here, those walls between are highly insulated and go all the way to the roof deck. And they're sealed at the top as well. It helps with both noise and odor. You can keep going. That's our Denver Tech Center, one of our playrooms. I just threw it in to show you what it looks like, a real one. That's our spa. Our front desk. That's what you'll walk into here. This is an outdoor yard. I put this picture in. It'll look similar to ours because it's kind of longer and narrower like that. Similar type of fence. The turf is permeable. We've got a civil engineering report on this as well to make sure percolates well. If you walk into a dog park, it usually feels like concrete. This will drain much better than that. We clean that with environmentally friendly enzymatic cleaner, as well as clean it throughout the day. You can go ahead. Keep going. I won't get into all the details of how we do it, which is what that is. Staff is all over it. And that's a picture of some of the cleaning we do in the outdoor yard. That machine on the bottom right is a special turf cleaner that we use in addition to enzymatic cleaners to take odor away. So I just wanted to give you that overview and our, as I said before, the unparalleled support just means we've got a strong franchise who are behind us with some really good scientists, other staff, and vets. So open to questions.
Excellent. We'll hit you. Councilmember Hefta, do you want to kick us off?
Sure. Not being a dog owner myself, but I have a fondness for dogs, just other people's dogs. Because I'm not very good with taking care of animals. But how many dogs do you anticipate to be within the facility at any one time?
There could be, when we, in this facility, the capacity will probably be somewhere around 140. We'll probably cap it at 120-ish, 125, in terms of just practical capacity with 8,000 square feet.
Did you say there was overnight boarding or not?
There is.
There is? Okay.
Yes.
And then waste management issues with that many dogs?
Yes. So we clean these.
Do you have a state-of-the-art system for that?
Yeah. Well, what we do, it's pretty straightforward. What we do is clean throughout the day, first of all, and we, any waste that's produced during the day, we pick up and we dispose of in a container, a closed container, in each of the dog's playroom. At the end of the day, we gather it all up from each of the playrooms, and we put it in our outdoor yard with a cover on it. This is in our retail center now. And then we know the schedules of the trash pickups typically, and we typically take it out an hour before that. We don't have any issues that way.
Okay, so you've got a good system for waste management?
We watch it closely.
And then just out of curiosity, how many staff do you, will you have, or up to 120 dogs?
Yeah, it grows as the dogs come during the day, but typically we'll have two, we call them canine coaches in each playroom, so that's eight in this facility. We'll have what we call a rover, who's taking dogs back and forth, two front desk personnel, and then a manager. So typically around 10 during the day.
And just one more curiosity question, the training involved for Dogtopia? Because I think there has been some issues with owners having their pets here, not being well taken care of. And so what's the training for Dogtopia?
Great question. That is what we particularly pride ourselves on, and that's part of the reason we got these awards. We train over 100 hours between online and in-room training before anybody gets into a room with a dog, to take care of dogs. So that's the first thing we do. So it's really extensive. In addition to that, we do things that most don't do, like evacuation training. What happens if there are 100 dogs in the building, and you've got seven employees, and you have a gas leak? We've got a procedure for that. We have training for that. We do hands-on training where we actually take dogs out, or staff dogs, on a weekend when there's nobody there to make sure that we're prepared for all of those. But pet-parent transparency is to us the number-one goal in all of this. All of our playrooms have cameras on them. We get reports back to the parents continuously. We bombard them with information. And if there are issues going on with their dog economy, we talk to them about it. We now are instituting the dog equivalent of Fitbits on them. We're one of five stores in the country testing them. So we're going to, they will get not only, you know, "How'd your dog do today?", "How many steps he took?", "What his heart rate was?", "How much he was exercising versus not exercising." We do wellness checks once a month as part of this with dog, looking at the dog's bodies for anything that looks unusual, their gums, and also temperature. So that's what we're going through in a pilot right now. Like I said, we're one of the five stores chosen to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Dyak?
No question. Just a comment. Appreciate your passion and commitment to your craft and business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilman Hendricks?
No question.
Okay. Councilman Rivera?
No, just one quick question, and it's contained in your report. But could you talk to me about, I'm the water guy, if you will, and my concern is water pollution. Talk to me about your backyard. Talk to me about your percolation system and how that is safer than maybe what the status quo is in these situations.
Right. So first of all, unlike some of the facilities I've seen here in Parker, when we pulled up that design, there's compressed aggregate outside with a permeable turf on top of it. And there's, so it's a permeable surface that goes underneath. We've worked with your engineering group here, and we had a civil engineer do a report on percolation. And also, there is a retention pond back there to make sure that everything will drain appropriately. First of all, there's very little fluid that comes out of there. I just want to mention that dogs come out. Some will urinate out there. We spray some water on it occasionally. But it's not like there's a lot of fluids out there. It's not like going to the dog park where there's hundreds of dogs all day long. We put dogs outside. You know, there's four playrooms. There's one outdoor play yard. We'll let a playroom out for an hour on a nice day. A lot of days are not out at all. So it's not as heavily used as like a dog park. But there is a percolation that we require to make sure that it's clean. And the drainage system there has been reviewed by civil engineer, and there's a civil engineering report in our file to confirm that. I mean, if there's something more technical than that, I would have to.
No, no. My concern is, you know, concentration reaching, you know, the stormwater. You said enzymes, you said, you know, some other things. I mean, I'm assuming naturally occurring enzymes that are breaking down waste. You know, nothing that you're not putting undue pollution into our stormwater system, correct?
Right. Correct. That's correct.
And our town has looked at that, and maybe I call up engineer Alex to talk a little bit about that. And that's my biggest concern, I think. I read your report. It's incredibly thorough. I will restate that in my comments towards the end of the night here. Incredibly thorough, better than I've ever seen. And again, I'll restate that later, except for this part. And this part was answered in one short little paragraph. And I just want to make sure that this is not a system that's causing.
Enzymatic?
Enzymatic and making, causing a concentration of pollutants into our stormwater.
It's so diluted. And these, if you go to a pet store now, you can buy over-the-counter enzymatic cleaners. People are using them in their lawns every day. And really, all it is is to break down for odor. It's not to kill. It's not a bacteria. It's safe for pets to walk on. We don't put pets out there, but it's immediately safe.
Could I call up Alex to speak a little bit to it, please, if you don't mind?
Yeah, so we did some preliminary review with the applicant's civil engineer. We will look at this more during final design of a site plan. As he mentioned, there is a detention water quality facility right behind the outdoor play. So they will provide some water quality treatment of anything that does go into the pond. But as he said, some pretreatment, I think, is going to be the key, making sure that their staff stays on top of that kind of stuff. of stuff. Make sure we don't get a concentration of water that may have a lot of dog waste in it, I think is going to be the key.
Absolutely. And, and thank you. It will be addressed during, during site. Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope, I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your time tonight. All right, we're going to go ahead and open it for public comment at 8:29, if anyone from the public wishes to make a comment on this item. Seeing none. Chris, do we have anybody on Zoom?
There is not.
All right, then we are going to go and close the public hearing at 8:29, and bring it back to the council for any debate or questions. I'm going to start back the other way. Councilman Rivera?
Thank you. I learned a new word or words, pet parent transparency. Fabulous. I did not know that such a thing would ever be around, but I am glad it is. No, we're, we're all about transparency up here. So pet parent transparency, by all means. No, and, and what I wanted to reference was, you know, there are nine approval criteria. You'll hear us all reference what we're weighing our decisions on, whether or not we, as elected body, feel you have met your nine criteria. And we give you the opportunity, or in fact, we require you the opportunity to address those nine criteria. I read them very thoroughly. I find that's where I get the most of my questions, either sometimes raised, but hopefully in most cases answered. And that's where it's taking me today. I don't think in my nearly 10 years, I have seen a more thorough answer of nine criteria in my career here. This is, I will not, I will, I will simply state, you actually average about nine pages to answer your nine criteria. And, and I don't know if you have the best legal team, or if this is something that's done by the franchise, but well done. I, other than my concern about stormwater, there was not a question that was not answered in your criteria answers. And staff, as I said earlier, during the auto body used by special review, staff goes through and reiterates your answers. And so just in, in my opinion, you have met and exceeded all nine criteria. Well done.
Councilman Hendricks?
I'll echo what Councilmember Rivera said, a very well-done thorough report. The passion you have for dogs is impressive, and I, I'm supportive of this.
Councilman Dyak?
I don't think I can add anything other than I'm supportive of the application.
And Councilmember Hefta?
Well, you can always add something, John. It's okay. Anyway, I want to recognize the expertise of Brandon, having a degree in animal science from my own alma mater, Michigan State University. Go Spartans. Having somebody on staff that's a manager with a degree in animal science from a top-rated university is just credit to the state of Parker, to the town of Parker of Colorado. Thank you. That's running this facility. We know it's in good hands. Secondly, veteran services, thank you for being, going to be an active partner and, and already an active partner with working with the veterans and training the service dogs in our community. Community service from our businesses is always appreciated, partnering with the town of Parker for our veterans and our residents as well. Thank you for that. And then third, your local employees, you're paying above minimum wage and you're providing valuable skills in the areas of animal science. And that's wonderful that you've decided to set the bar higher than minimum wage and go $3 above that at least. And I'm sure you'll have a great program for those employees once they get on board. So thank you.
Excellent. With that, counsel, I will entertain a motion on the approval of the used by special review for Dogtopia.
I move to approve based on staff findings and conditions contained in the staff report.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Councilman Rivera, second by Councilmember Hendricks. Rivera?
Aight.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes four to zero. Welcome to Parker. Appreciate it. All right, next up, we're going into ordinances. So the first up for tonight is ordinance number 1.561 on second reading. It's a bill for an ordinance conveying certain real property by easement to Parker Water and Sanitation District for a portion of Track B, Mountain View Senior Center filing number one, minor development. And I believe we have Mr. Mustow with us. You're just in everything tonight.
A little of everything.
It's great. It's great.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Before you, it was a request to dedicate a Parker, an easement to Parker Water and Sanitation District over a town-owned parcel known as Track B of Mountain View Senior Center filing number one. This first slide shows a vicinity map of this parcel. It's located on the American Academy property off Matsumbacher Road. That property was platted originally as Mountain View Senior Center. It was planned as a senior center back in 1997. It's generally located at the southwest corner of Main Street and Matsumbacher Road, south of Clark Farms there. With that original plat in 1997, the town was dedicated a small rectangular parcel in the southwest corner of that property for right-of-way purposes. It was originally thought that there may be a roadway connection between the future Old Town Development that was still yet to be built, north to Clark Farms, along that alignment. It was going to extend just north out of Old Town, shift to the west, and connect into Clark Farms there, where you see the existing roadway connection. Ultimately, that did not happen. Old Town developed with a different roadway layout. You can see the, the ultimate connection that actually was constructed to the west there. So there really is no roadway use for this small right-of-way parcel that the town owns at this point. Next slide, please. So currently, the property to the west, known as Cenderos Creek, is preparing to develop. The preliminary plan was, was approved by the town council back in August of '21. It's proposed as residential development. Through their design, Parker Water and Sanitation has required them to build a new sanitary sewer line to serve the property along the south property line of that, of that parcel that will connect all the way east over to Matsumbacher Road. So in order to construct this, Parker Water is requiring an easement over a small portion of Track B. And the next slide has a blow-up of Track B and what that easement would look like. You can see the Track B is really blown up here in the middle, outlined in black. The proposed easement that they are requesting is in shaded in red. The lines highlighted in green are the proposed sanitary sewer mains that would need to be built with the project. So you can see the lines extending to the west and the north that would serve the property. And then the main along that south property line extending to the east is the one that would ultimately tie into Matsumbacher Road through the American Academy property. So they're asking for a small easement, well, an easement over most of Track B, which is a small property. It's .12 acres. The, the block on the south end of the parcel is obviously to, easement block is to, to accommodate that, that's main going to the east. The strip going north and south along the west boundary is just so they can get their full 50-foot width of easement. That sanitary line going north-south is going to share an easement with the storm sewer. When they do, they want to have 50 feet of width to accommodate both utilities and be able to maintain them and excavate if they have to. So next slide, please. A few other quick points. The easement is proposed to be dedicated as part of an ongoing cooperative easement swap between our partner agency, Parker Water and Sanitation District. And the town would not have any management responsibilities for any sanitary sewer built within this tract. It will be the, the property owner's responsibility as long as, as well as Parker Water and Sanitations. So with that, staff does recommend approval of ordinance 1.561. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. And staff questions? Councilmember Rivera, any questions?
Nothing like a conveyance of real property to clear the room, Alex.
No kidding.
No questions.
Councilman Hendricks?
Can't follow that, no.
Councilman Dyak?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
No, no.
With that, we will open this up for public comment at 8:37. Anybody from the public in the room wishing to make a public comment? Seeing none. Chris, anybody on Zoom?
There are none.
Seeing none. We'll close public comment at 8:37 and bring it back to the council for final comments. Councilman Rivera?
No comments.
Councilmember Hendricks? Councilmember Dyak?
No comments.
Councilmember Hefta, I'm Hendricks. Hefta, I got it right the first time, damn it.
Too many H's. H's are too tight.
I just appreciate the cooperative easement swap and the no maintenance for the, the town on this matter as well. Thank you.
That I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number 1.561.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.561 on second reading.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Hendricks, second by Councilmember Dyak. Rivera?
Aight.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
And that passes four to zero. Next up is ordinance number 5.06.45 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to amend section 8.07.070 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning harassment. Kelsey Hall, you're taking us home on this one.
I am. The apps were only down by one when I left my office, so I'm going to try to make this quick. Good evening, council members. Oh, are they tied, Josh? Yes, okay.
Not that I know of here.
Yeah, I was reading that. Well, good evening, council members and mayor. I am here to present an ordinance that would amend our local harassment ordinance in light of a decision that was brought down by the Colorado Supreme Court in People versus Moreno. The court struck down that statute as in part for being constitutionally overbroad because it stated that it would be criminal to make a communication to someone with the intent to harass them. And so because that is overbroad, they struck down those words. Our ordinance is worded very similarly, so we are asking that you strike out the words harass or in our statute so that it more closely is aligned with the First Amendment and really targets truly non-protected speech such as obscenity, true threats, or libel. Any questions?
Excellent. We'll start with questions with Councilmember Dyak.
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yep. Once again, you're going to strike the words with intent to harass.
And we are not going to strike intended to harass. We are going to strike harass or because we'd like to have it read intended to threaten bodily injuries. We'd like to keep the intended, just the harass or.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilman Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilman Rivera?
No questions.
All right. With that, we'll open this up for public comment at 8:39. Seeing no members of the public in the room. Chris, anybody on Zoom?
There are none.
All right. And we will close this at 8:40 and bring it back to the council in the same order. Councilman Dyak?
Apps just scored, just to let you know.
Councilmember Hefta?
I appreciate this being amended because matters that are overbroad tend to confuse everyone. So I'm very happy that the Colorado Supreme Court recently ruled that the phrase intended to harass in the context of the state's anti-harassment statute is constitutionally overbroad. Thank you.
Right. Councilman Hendricks?
No comments or questions.
Councilman Rivera?
Thank you. I second Councilwoman Hefta's opinion. Appreciate the definition by the Supreme Court and obviously our obligation to match said law.
All right. With that, I will entertain a motion on ordinance number 5.06.45.
I move to approve ordinance number 5.06.45 on second reading.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilman Dyak, second by Councilmember Hefta. Rivera?
Aight.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
And Hefta?
Yes.
With no other business for the Parker Town Council, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Hendricks. Motion is made by Councilman Dyak, second by Councilmember Hendricks. Rivera?
Aight.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes four to zero, and we're adjourned at 8:41.